Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 27th day of March 2023. I'd like to welcome all of our guests tonight and get right into tonight's agenda. The first item being consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on March 13th of 2023. Okay, council, we have a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your package? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is anybody in the quarters wanting to speak other than an agenda item? Hearing none, moving right along. Okay, tonight we start the first round of city council grant presentations. Welcome, everybody. This is always an exciting time of the year for us as we set the next fiscal year budget that takes effect July 1st of 2023. We do our council grants, and so we'll move right into them tonight. First up is the Children's Home Society of West Virginia. I'd like to welcome Stormy Murphy to the podium to tell us about the Children's Home Society grant. And let me just set the record here, it looks like you all have applied for $10,000.
Yes.
Good. For yours, welcome.
Thank you. I was hoping to go after somebody else. So I'm Stormy Murphy with Children's Home Society. A little bit about our agency, we have been in existence since May of 1896. Our mission has been to promote the well-being of all West Virginia children and meet the need to find safe and loving homes for children across the state to ensure that every child in West Virginia grows up in a reliable, stable, and nurturing family, and that all families are equipped with the tools and support they need to see the children succeed. Children's Home Society is a nonprofit organization, and while we do generate revenue through the West Virginia DHHR for services and support that we provide to the children in our care, we are also dependent on fundraisers and grants to help meet our financial needs in order to continue operating. Currently, our site is operating at an annual budget deficit of approximately $88,000. And grant funding would help offset regular operating expenses incurred such as rent, utilities, maintenance, and office supplies. Children's Home Society's Somersville office provides services to Braxton, Fayette, Nicholas, and Webster counties, as well as parts of Platte County. We support our families and children in several ways: at least twice monthly visits by social workers, social worker presence at MDT meetings and court hearings, 24 hours, seven days a week accessibility to a social worker. We do monthly support groups for foster parents where real childcare and training is provided. We act as a liaison between the department and other entities, and we do treat with coordination among other services. Currently, Somersville CHS site has 10 open foster homes that are providing care for 24 children in the foster care system. In 2022, a total of 52 children will serve by our site. Five new homes were opened, but unfortunately, none of those closed. This was mostly due to adoptions. While our site received 40 inquiries, people who were interested in becoming licensed during 2022, only 12 applications were received. And of those 12 applications, only two homes followed through with licensing and remain active today. We currently have four homes that are in the process of becoming certified. Our goal for 2023 is to open at a minimum of five new foster homes while retaining our current families, and we hope to be providing service to a minimum of 35 children by the end of the calendar year. In 2022, past years, Somersville's Children's Home Society has participated in several events and festivals in an attempt to recruit potential foster homes in our area. Since at least 2019, the city of Somersville has supported recruitment efforts and helped offset the cost of training and opening homes through grant funding. Those funds have been used to purchase recruitment items such as giveaways at the events and festivals, recruitment yard signs, running newspaper ads, printing recruitment flyers to distribute in churches and in local businesses, the purchasing of candy for local trunk retreats at Halloween where we put our logo and our address and information on the bags, as well as cover the cost of training materials, CPR for state certifications, well-water testing when needed, and travel reimbursement. Licensed foster homes are required by the state and CHS to obtain a minimum of 15 training hours annually. Children's Home Society requires families complete a trauma-informed curriculum, which is called Together Facing the Challenge, and we would like for all of our families to complete this within the first six months of opening. Funding would be used to provide foster families with training materials for this curriculum and other trainings as needed. Furthermore, families are reimbursed for costs of training done online in order to acquire these 15 hours, well-water testing, and first aid and CPR recertifications, which are all necessary to maintain their licensing requirements. In addition to providing foster care and adoption services, we do have a resource room that is available to all members of the community who have a need. From January 2022 to present, we have been able to help a total of seven specific families and an unidentified number of participants in the Nicholas County Family Treatment Court. At this time, our resource room is solely supported through donations by community members, thus limiting our ability to help those in need of assistance. Financial funding can help us maintain and expand inventory in our resource room in order to better meet the needs of community members who require aid. Thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you. You have a great overview. Council, any questions?
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stormy. Do you want to give a little plug for your hotline and secret?
Yes. So one of those fundraisers that we do is our annual Hook, Line &amp; Sink or Fast Fishing Tournament where we partner with Bass Nation. They follow their rules and regulations. They do all the voting in and all the fidelity of everything. And this will be our third annual one. We do go out to the communities, and we request sponsorships and donation items. The prizes, because it is a fundraiser, makes the fast special money, of course, fish for money, but...
That's worth it.
We do prize baskets. We have a lot of our businesses and stuff. The arts have donated, the wrecking companies usually donate, just a lot of businesses, and we put together prize baskets for the winners, and then we have to do 20% of all the entries. Right now, this time, we do have five votes registered, but usually they start registering a little bit closer times, so we're hoping to have at least 30 votes this year.
Okay, great deal. May tournament?
Yes.
Get registered by April what? You get a tee-shirt?
The first 30 votes, which would be 60 people, because it's two people per vote. The first 30 votes to register will get a tee-shirt. If we have sponsors or donors that exceed $501 or $501 up, it'll be put on back the tee-shirt, put on the tee-shirt, their logo.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did you say that... When did this organization start?
Children's Home Society is a statewide agency, and it was founded by Reverend back in May of 1896.
That's what I thought you said.
Back whenever they did the orphan trade, where the train would run up and down and drop kids off, and we'd pick them up and take them to the farm or whatever. We did have a extensive history, a very long history.
Okay, thank you, Stormy. Appreciate what you all do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving right along. Next to the podium, we welcome New Beginnings Resource Center, Rita Robinson. Familiar face? Hi, Rita.
Hey, how you all doing?
Good.
I have my phone on my phone because I left my papers at the office, but anyway, I think I can explain a little bit about us. I am with New Beginnings Resource Center. We are a ministry of New Beginnings Worship Center, right up the street here. We are located at the old Sears Building by the carpet and floor store, and we've been doing this... Actually, our grand application says 2019, but we actually started this process back when the flood happened, I believe, 2017?
16.
16, excuse me. So we've been starting this process since then, and it all started when the flood happened, and people just started bringing things from our church to our fellowship hall. So from that, we began to grow. We were in the downstairs of our fellowship hall. We moved upstairs. We did it once a month: baby diapers, clothing, food bills. And then from there, we were blessed and provided the building that we have up at the carpet and floor store next door. And from that, we have grown into clothing, food, hygiene products, baby items, anything that you could possibly think of that would be needed by a family. We run solely by donations and grants only. We are strictly, like I said, a nonprofit. Our church, though they're very supportive of us, we have been blessed in that we have never had to have our church support us in this endeavor. And right now, we serve somewhere around 400 people, former families, a month, but I think that number's a little low, the overall being 4,800. We actually probably could triple that if we knew exactly, because we have large families who show up. We don't only serve Nicholas County, Somersville, Richwood, or this area. We serve Braxton, Raleigh, Fayette, Wyoming, Logan. Our pastor is all over the southern part of the state, and he is a go-getter, and he keeps us on our feet. He keeps us running. So the money that we're asking for is $15,000. We are wanting to purchase more freezers, refrigeration units. We currently have around eight to 10 units, but we have partnered with Cisco Foods out of Harrisville, Virginia, and they donate hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of food to us when we can store it. And so with that, when we get those trucks, we share that throughout the community. So it's just not with our resource center. We share with Richwood. We share with Anstead. We share with the folks down in Logan County. It's just a multitude of people. Braxton County, we service, help them out as well. We've had folks come from Jackson County as well. They bring their trucks, their trailers, and anything that we have that we can give to them, we give to them. Our food costs us... The budget for this one is around $4,000. We spend usually between $1,500 to $2,000 a month, even on supplemental food, because we provide canned food as well. Our health and media aides and our diapers and that type of ministry, that we also use as with grant money if we have it, but it runs right around $3,000 a year, sometimes more. We give what we can when we don't have any more, then of course, that's all there is. But again, we service the entire southern part of the state as much as we can, and that's pretty much what we're all about. I could get into my passion. But it's looking at these families, because diapers and wipes, of course, are not things that they can purchase with monies from other organizations. That's something that, you know, snack benefits and those types of things do not pay for. The food, we do have a lot of folks, and I'm sure you gentlemen are well aware of that, we do have a lot of folks who struggle with food, just in general. We get calls all the time, can you fix us up a box? And that's all well and good, but it's the meat, the things that are so expensive that they can't buy. And when we can get our hands on it, we are more than happy and willing to provide that to anybody and everybody, like I said, other centers or whatever. So that's what we're looking at doing with this money.
Great. Hey, a couple of questions. Your newfound partnership with Cisco, which you get all that food from?
Yes.
Are you all still partnered with the Mountaineer Food Bank?
Yes, we are. They do provide us with stuff, but I will tell you, since COVID, the last couple of years, they have struggled themselves to acquire food. We used to get a lot of USDA commodities, which did not cost us anything, but now that food is hard to get their hands on too, their hands on, because the farmers and the other resources they have, it's just not there. They actually told me, the fellow that goes out and looks for these resources, he can't find them. He can't find them. They have reefer trucks up there that are just sitting, not even running anymore. I'm used to you would go up there, and there'd be three or four reefer trucks running with refrigerated items on it, and they just don't have it anymore.
Okay, then one last thing. Stormy, have you ever been up to the resource center that they have? Have you ever been up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you all can... You were talking about trying to get finances for resources that you need to give adoptive families. I mean, I was just thinking, I wonder if you've ever...
Yes, we have partnered with them before, and they have provided stuff.
Outstanding. I was just thinking that when you were talking, knowing that you were next, if you all had ever...
Backing up to, we also work with some of the local schools, the alternative school. They're always looking for resources for food, for clothing, and we do work with them and provide them as much as we can come up with. And there's other organizations and churches that we help out to. But yes, actually, the Children's Home Society used to come to our church for their meetings, and it was a good thing, but COVID changed that.
Good deal, good deal. Okay, excellent report. Again, another excellent group, organization. Council, any questions?
How does it break down, the money that you're requesting from us, the $15,000? What is that going to be used for?
We're looking at $8,000 for refrigeration. I think I have $4,000 for health and media aides and diapers. I'm sorry, I don't have it right here.
Yeah, what you have on the list is refrigeration unit, food and water, diapers and hygiene.
Yeah, and the diapers and hygiene are the $3,000. Actually, we do have churches that do help us out as well, but it's never enough. And if you gentlemen ever have nothing to do on Saturday morning, the third Saturday of the month, I would encourage you to just drive by if you don't want to stop. We have folks sitting outside, parked in our parking lot, but lined up with camp chairs at 8 o'clock in the morning waiting, because it is a first-come, first-served, and they know, they think, the best is first, but it's not always. But anyway, just drive by and see. They're lined up usually right back down the Craig's front door of his store, so.
Is there any screening mechanism as far as the people that come in?
Yeah, there is. We do not request that they give us any proof of income, but they do have to fill out a form, an application, and it is based on the honor system. They'll give us all the demographics, but there's a salary, income type range, and it's based on USDA. It's not something we've set up. It's based on the USDA, and they have to fall inside those categories. Now, we will give them food. It does not matter to us what their income is, but in order to get the USDA items, they have to fall within that income, and it's based on the DHHR's income.
Those guidelines, yeah.
Their guidelines.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Hey, Rita, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, a community blessed of all kinds and good organizations. Next up is Nicholas County Community Foundation and Executive Director, Tamara Mullins. Make sure you tell us who's with you tonight.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening, and I'm here this evening with our Board President, Bruce Calamy, and our former Board President and still Board Member, Jay Morrell, and as well as our other Board Member, Robert Schaefer.
Didn't mean me.
I wasn't sure. We also, our other Board Members, I just wanted to tell you real quick, Kelly Blake is our Vice President, Steve Ferguson, our Treasurer, Jim Davis, our Secretary, Anita Groves, Barbara LaRose, Mary Igo, Greg Scrolls, John Walco, and Ben Jingrap are also volunteer Board Members. And on behalf of them, we would like to thank you all for continuing your support of this important foundation. I'm not sure if everybody knows that we started in 2006 as a hospital foundation, and it grew from there in 2009 with the Sealing Door Family Funds merging into this foundation and some other funds. We became a full-fledged community foundation. Since that inception, we have given back to this community over $1.5 million. And so we are very proud of that, and we support nonprofit programs like The Christmas Store, New Beginnings Resource Center, Love Works, Bread of Life, to name a few. The way our program works is we take our donations and their house as individual funds under the umbrella of the Nicholas County Community Foundation. Those funds are invested, and we take a small operation fee every year from those funds. And that's how we continue to operate, is through those fees and from grants like yours. The rest of the funds actually just stay within their own little unit, and only a small portion is spent from that annually toward grants and toward scholarships. And our Board and our Investment Committee, who are very conservative, Investment Committee decide on what percentage of spend that we'll give out every year from those funds. And the purpose of being very conservative is to make sure that these are forever funds. So our intention is to make sure that these funds will continue to grow, and we only give a portion of the interest that may not ever go into the principal. And so we have a very frugal streamlined budget, and are operating under $90,000 per year. I am a part-time employee, and we have the accounting services, and all of our operating costs, we just really try to keep on a tight leash. I guess it's a long game, and so what we're trying to do here is to build trust and build relationships and build legacy, but most importantly, to continue to build community forever. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Excellent. Council, any questions?
I do also want to drop one of these with each of you. This was the 2021 annual report, and we'll have something out in short time this year. Please feel free to contact me anytime with any questions you have. And again, we appreciate all of your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you.
Great report, an update, and another great organization. Appreciate all that the foundation does for our community.
Thank you. Oh, I forgot to add, this past year alone, we gave out over $240,000 in scholarships and grants. I'm sorry, I left that out.
Okay, moving right along. And actually, the foundation ask is $5,000, and again, that's for their operating budget, and it says, "Together we grow." Thank you, Tamara. Okay, moving right along. The next on the agenda is the Nicholas County Shop with the First Responder, and we have
Good evening. My name's Noah Allen with the Nicholas County Shop, the First Responder. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. We've been operating since 2017, and the purpose of our charity is to provide Christmas gifts and other essentials to underprivileged children that live in Nicholas County. The way our organization works is we gather donations through grants and fundraisers throughout the community, and then we pick a shopping date at our local Somersville Walmart, and we pick local children throughout the area who are in need of Christmas gifts that they might not be able to afford. We have local police departments, firefighters, EMTs, dispatchers, and other first responders in our community. They volunteer the year evening, and they come and shop with the kids. We allot so much money per child to make sure they get enough Christmas gifts, and then if they need any school supplies or any winter clothes or any other essential items, we also provide those as well. Almost 100% of our donations go strictly to the Christmas program. We have very few administrative costs, and everybody donates the time 100% of this to this group. We're seeking $2,500 to assist with this year's event. When we first started in 2017, we had 40 children, and last year, we had 240 children. So we've been able to help more and more children each year, and we've kind of raised more money to meet those needs. We've never had to turn away a child who wasn't eligible, so we've done this for six years in a row now. We're trying to shoot for seven years to help every single child who needs assistance with Christmas. So we're seeking $2,500 to help with our Christmas program, and that's what our organization does. Everything goes back to the community, and it's a great time for all these first responders. We get to help out all these children who need assistance with each Christmas. It's a great program. We love doing it.
Okay, great deal. First, Noah, thanks for... A big thank you to all the first responders and what you all do. I understand the commitment that you all, the sacrifices and commitments you make to do what you do, and then it's wonderful you have a program like this. The only question I have, I think I know the answer to, you get your leads on these kids from where? Does it come through?
So we solicit them through Facebook, and we also, if we know some teachers out there, we'll check at their schools and see who which families might be in need. Every family has to fill out an application for their children. A child must live within Nicholas County, and the child must be between 4 and 15 years old. It has to be at least four years old so the child can walk on their own, first responder, and then there's other criteria, such as they must meet the income requirements, which I can how many dependents there are per family, and what the total household income is. We... Most of our applications are people who are truly in need, and then we have a committee that'll meet a couple weeks before that, and we'll figure out which applications to approve. Like I said, we've done this for six years, and we've never turned away an application yet that has not been worthy of our assistance.
Good deal. Council, any questions?
What's your, just an average kind of budget for this thing?
When we first started, we had about 40 children, and we allot approximately $100 a child. The $100 goes to Christmas gifts. However, if we feel that child is in need as far as needing school supplies or winter clothes, then we'll allot some extra money to it as well. Last year, we had approximately 240 kids, and we need a minimum of $100 per child, however, we want to have at least 15% to 20% over that, just in case we do run into some other children who are in more need of our assistance. So last year's operating budget was approximately, I believe, about $23,000 to $24,000.
Good deal. Any other questions, Council? Okay. Hey, thanks, Noah.
Thank you.
Another great organization. Okay, and the final one up tonight, last but not least. Buck Hamrick and the Wally Squadron, RC Squadron.
That's the benefit of having Wally Squadron. Go on alphabetically, we're always last. Now, I am Buck Hamrick. I represent Wally Squadron here at Somersville, local RC flying group, which is a bunch of groovy men having fun with toys, but we're a lot more than that. This will be our 32nd year, providing we don't get flooded out again like we did last year, putting on this event. We bring folks from all over the East Coast into this area every August. They come in and stay in motels, use restaurants, campgrounds, pretty good boost to the economy when they come in. On our normal year, we'll have about 200 families come in for the fly-in, not to mention the local people. That's just out of towners. One of the things that we do, we feed everybody for free on Saturday of the fly-in, which this year is August 16th through the 19th. We give them hot dogs and drinks all day, and then we have a nice fireworks display at night where we fly lighted airplanes through and try to shoot them down, and we do, and that's a lot of fun. It's really good family entertainment. It's a good way to spend the week or weekend, whatever you want to do, like I said, along with the drawl to the community. We normally, the last three years, we've had a budget of $15,000 to put this show on. That gets us our food, ice, toilets, electricity, everything that it takes to put this on. Last year, we had everything ready to go. Last year, we had everything ready to go, right up to the weekend before the event. Field got two feet of water on it, and we were done. But we will, I told someone the other day, if we end up getting rowboats this year, we're going to have it. But on the normal year, we'll have $3,000 to $4,000 of carryover money to get us through the next fall. This past year, we had 340-some dollars left over. So the club members have been paying the power bills and that sort of thing out of their pocket, which, you know, it's our club, we should. But with the event, we've asked for $1,000 to help us. We get out and do raffle events and sell t-shirts and that sort of thing to raise the rest of our money, along with community support from you guys and local businesses. We get our monies to hold this event. Other than that, I've been here for, coming here for years, I think you all know me longer about, but if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Counsel? Okay, thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Appreciate what you do too. Certainly is a great activity for the area, and you also do a lot to help with the economics when you have your guests.
Well, I know it was a pretty good trust to the local motels and stuff.
Yep, absolutely.
This past year when the people had to cancel, so.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so in closing this first segment of grant presentations, just so you all know, the second round is April 10th, and then the City Council will give the awards of their grants at the April 24th meeting. You do not need to be present, if you just want to come out and see another council meeting, you're certainly, you're certainly welcome. But like always, you'll hear from Cookie after they give their awards, what you're awarded, okay? So that concludes the grant presentations for this evening. Moving right along with the agenda, and you're all welcome, I know many of you have other things to do, you're welcome. Moving right along with the agenda, the next item on the agenda is Recorder's Report. See, no Recorder's Report, okay. Next item on the agenda is Mayor's Report. Counsel, I just have a few things for you. Want to start tonight first, I know that you all had a copy of this in your packet, but it is time for the annual spring cleanup. Awards one and two will be April 3 through 7. Awards three and four will be April 10 through 14. We ask you to get your items out as early as possible in the week. Once you get your items out, we're asking you to call City Hall at 872-1211 to let us know you have a pickup. Allowable items are furniture, appliances, and other large items. If you happen to put out an appliance that contains freon, you do have to have a certificate with a sticker indicating that the freon has been removed. Unallowable items, regular garbage, leaves, brush, tires, and construction debris are not allowed. I'm pretty much saying if it's not that, it's allowed, put it out, we'll clean it up. We do this to promote the beautification of our city and also to help our citizens, you know, clean up and clean out their properties. Want to be clear that this service is for the only citizens that live within the corporate limits, and it is illegal for anybody outside city limits to bring items in to the city for pickup. I guess you'll go to jail, directly to jail, without pass and go. No, but I guess in the past, we've had a snag or two where folks want to get in on the program that don't live in the city. This is a benefit for our citizens of the great city of Summersville. So the next item is, I want to let you know that the drawing for the ballot placement for candidates on the city election, which is June 13th, will take place on April 4th, right here in Chambers at 9:00 a.m. So counsel, if you're interested in seeing where you're at on the ballot, you can come by at 9:00 a.m. on April 4th. Another big cleanup is the Earth Day 2023 Summersville Lake Cleanup. Volunteers are needed, and actually, there will be a contingent of city people this year involved in this lake cleanup, as it's important. Actually, from an economic standpoint, this is one of our biggest, from a standpoint of tourism. This takes place on April 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. The registration for the cleanup at the lake is at 8:30 a.m., and it's at the Battle Run Beach Parking Lot. So folks, we encourage you to get involved. They've got gloves, trash bags, and trash pickers will be provided. They're asking you to bring a refillable water bottle, and of course, some people will be taken out on boats to do actual cleanup on the lake. Lunch will be provided for volunteers, and the first 100 volunteers will get a t-shirt. Again, the important thing to remember is this takes place on April 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. If you need any additional information, they're encouraging you to contact Rachel Lee at the Summersville Lake office, and that number is 872-3412. Get involved in this, we're encouraging people to get involved in this, to help clean up the Summersville Lake area, and of course, this is all being done to support Earth Day The next item, counsel, I just want to give you a real quick overview and update on Hydro. Last week on Wednesday, I welcomed the Ellis Power, the new owner of the O and M contract at the, at the Hydro Plant. Got to meet face-to-face with those folks for the first time last Wednesday, had a great meeting. In that meeting, we also invited Brett McMillian, the Director of the DNR. He brought with him Deputy Director Wendy Green, had a great meeting with them. First part of the meeting, our meeting, was our collaboration and partnership with them, and the many things that we do with them, in partnership with them, and then also financially support them with through Hydro monies. So we had a great meeting there. We had a heavy discussion on the power purchase agreement, currently where we sit, what the obstacles would be if we wanted to change, and also, we got great detail about our future arrangements, the actual PPA expires in four years. And then, of course, we had an update from the Undersecretary of the Army's Office, Secretary Connor's Office, on the pending letter. As you all know, we've been working diligently with the Secretary's Office to get, to move forward on our study, and we were informed last Wednesday that the actual letter back to me is sitting on the Secretary's desk, waiting to be signed, as he and others in his office are spread out through the country dealing with other obstacles currently that are at a priority with the Corps of Engineers. So we expect that letter to be, the arrival of the letter to be sometime soon. Optimistically, I'm very excited. We've made great ground working through the Secretary's Office, and, you know, there's great things, I think, on the horizon from a standpoint of requests that we've been making for decades, to be able to evaluate, study, and review with the opportunity of enhancements at our hydro plant. So looking forward to that. Any questions, counsel? Okay, counsel reports, any counsel comments?
Mayor, I was up at the Woods and Water Expo this weekend, and there was a great turnout.
Good deal, yeah, it was a good show.
Of course, I saw you up there, but it looked like a good turnout.
Yeah, yeah. I actually called Mary Ann today, and she's still trying to get herself sorted back out, but she said that it was well attended. I was actually there on Friday, were you there Saturday?
I was there both days.
Okay, and they said Saturday, yeah, they said Saturday was really busy, so that's great. We're always glad to hear that, because that's the actual show that Mary Ann and her crew put off, that's the show that's actually put off by the conference center, so we're always excited, and we have great turnout for that. Okay, any other counsel comments? Executive session is not needed, no, I'm sorry.
I will say, I'll try to get this out just right. On social media, it's all over about potholes and streets and conditions and all that. Unless I'm missing something in my ward or around town, I am really pleased to live in a city that where we are not the branch of all those jokes. We have a nice city, streets are paved, I'm not getting any complaints, and I'm pretty pleased with that.
And actually, we are scheduled to do, I wish I had the exact information, but our, our next round of paving will be in the spring, early spring, we're at the beginning of the list, so it won't be too long until we'll do another heavy round of paving. I think this time, we're going to do about another $170,000 for it.
I think it works to maintain it every year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we going to have a list of projects? You know, you did that once before, I think.
Yeah, so you mean, you mean where we're paving? Okay, I can get that for you. I can get that for you. And I will tell you that it's really disappointing like anything else, the cost, it's unreal, and it's almost shameful how little we're going to be able to do with our budget of 170,000. You know, it's, it's, and, you know, just something that I can put in perspective real quick, because we're making serious headway on the sidewalk project on Webster Road, and with those grant funds and stuff, I finally pulled the plug and said, we're going forward, we're not going to wait for any more money from that program. Actually, we're going to break it off and make it two projects now instead of one. But, you know, we're trying to figure out how far we're going to be able to go with the half a million dollars that we've already got committed, and, and, you know, before the pandemic, we were paying, you know, 125 a yard for cement, now it's up over 220. So, I mean, you just, you know, that's $100, so, you know, when you could do, and paving's the same way, it's unreal, the cost of materials, so. Okay, any other comments? What's that?
Easter egg hunt.
Wayne says Easter egg hunt, I didn't write that down, but I know I can bump back to last time, and the City of Summersville Easter Egg Hunt is April 8th at 10:00 a.m. at the Summersville Arena and Conference Center. So our annual Easter Egg Hunt. Kids, come out. Thank you, Wayne. Okay, hearing, and let me say something else too. My wife and I had the honor of attending the 20's Celebration at Brown Oaks, and I cannot commend Bill Anderson and the Board of Directors enough for what a wonderful evening it was, and it really was, we had a great time. And, you know, Bill Anderson, that is his forte, and, I mean, he made the evening from the very beginning at arrival like you were in the 20's. And so, I mean, we all wore name tags that night, we were people from the 20's. Believe it or not, I was Fred Astaire.
Did you bathe?
And just by accident, just by accident, I wore a brand-new pair of shoes I had, and so it was so fitting. But anyway, just a wonderful evening, a great crowd, and I can't say enough for the work that takes place with the Brown Oaks Board and their Executive Director. So Wayne, please pass that on to the crew, what a, what a great evening. Okay, with that said, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second. Got a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign, motion so carries. Thank you, counsel, have a great evening.